We'd ask that you please stand. Reverend William will lead us in invitation. Remain standing for our pledge to the flag.
Let us pray. Gracious heavenly Father, we give thanks again for allowing us to represent the citizens of Goldsboro. We've been blessed with the opportunity to make a difference in the way things should be done. And we acknowledge that we could not have accomplished so much without the divine presence in the order of things. As the tenure of some of us come to close, our prayers will continue to be for those who have been elected by the people to represent us. We pray that their decisions and governance will be highly beneficial for all the citizens of Goldsboro. We pray that our city would be one of the most desired places for us others to come and shop, to live, to work, to worship, and to take leisure. We pray for safety, a decrease in crime, a place of great resources, beauty, and a haven for business, and a thriving economy. We pray for the poor, the middle class, and the wealthy. We also make intercession for all city employees, their families, all citizens, our state, our nation, all nations, and especially France. And we ask all this in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll ask the city clerk to have a roll call for us.
Mayor King?
Here.
Mayor Proton Allen?
Here.
Councilmember Haddon?
Here.
Councilmember Broadway?
Here.
Councilmember Goodman?
Here.
Senator Williams?
Here.
Thank you. We're all here. Next, we'll have approval of our minutes of our work session on regular meeting of September 21st and October 5th.
Move to adopt.
Second. Motion and a second. Any other comments, corrections, additions? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known with an aye. Closing. Minutes approved. Public comment period. Anyone who would like to speak to us at this time, you may do so. We ask that you keep it to three minutes. Anyone like to speak? See no signs, so we will move right along to our presentations. And we have a few, starting with Seymour Johnson recognition. And I'll start that one. And it's a resolution. Resolution expressing appreciation for services to Seymour Johnson Air Force Base and the Fourth Equipment Maintenance Squadron. Whereas the Goldsboro community is a better place to live, thanks to dedicated, hard-working citizens who volunteer their time and talents toward helping others. And whereas Seymour Johnson Air Force Base has been a vital part of the city of Goldsboro for many years and contributes to the community in many ways. And whereas the Fourth Equipment Maintenance Squadron is a vital part of Seymour Johnson Air Force Base and the city of Goldsboro, and we appreciate them for selfishness donating their time, personnel, equipment to paint, restore, and assist in the move, in the movement of the F-86 Sabre aircraft on all of the occasions it has been restored. Whereas the F-86 Sabre aircraft is now on display at the intersection of Ash and Center Streets due to the most recent restoration and donation of over 644 million dollars provided by the airmen at Seymour Johnson Air Force Base. And whereas the mayor and city council of the city of Goldsboro desires on behalf of themselves, of the city officials, employees, and the citizens of Goldsboro of expressing to Seymour Johnson Air Force Base and the Fourth Equipment Maintenance Squadron their deep appreciation and gratitude for service surrendered to the city over the years. Now therefore being resolved by the mayor and city council of the city of Goldsboro, North Carolina, that we express our thanks to Seymour Johnson Air Force Base and the Fourth Equipment Maintenance Squadron for the volunteer hours rendered restoring the F-86 Sabre aircraft. This resolution shall be incorporated into official minutes of the city of Goldsboro and shall be in full force and effect from and after the 16th day of November 2015. All for this motion, this resolution for adoption. Second. Have a motion and a second?
Second.
We have any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known with an aye. Closing. Motion carries and the adoption is. Cool?
Now we got the people that did the work.
Pardon?
I say you got the people that did the work.
We got the people who did the work here.
Yeah.
Well.
I think I'll. I'll be right.
I'll come down to you. How are you? Thank you so much on behalf of all of our citizens and all of you down here. Thank you so much for giving us your time, your energy, and talent. Now we have part of you, me, and all of us right up here in that attention. So again, I want to present this to you. And personally, thank you for your energy and time for, how many times have you restored? You probably don't know, but this time, do you know?
No.
Okay. I know it's been a long time. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Do you have a comment to make or?
Uh, thank you, U C.
Okay.
Thank the guys.
Okay, we have another presentation. Chuck, would you take charge of that one?
Yes, sir. Resolution number 2015-92, expressing appreciation to Pearson Pump Sales and Service. Whereas the Goldsboro community is a better place to live, thanks to dedicated, hard-working citizens and businesses who volunteer their time and talent toward helping others. And whereas Pearson Pump Sales and Service has been located in the city of Goldsboro since 1978. And whereas Pearson Pump has selfishly donated their time, personnel, and equipment to move the F-86 Sabre aircraft on all of the occasions it has moved within the city of Goldsboro. Whereas Pearson Pump again donated their time, personnel, and equipment to assist in lifting the aircraft onto a trailer February 2014 and again in October 2015 where it was placed on the pile and at Ash and Center where it is today. Whereas the mayor and city council of the city of Goldsboro are desires on behalf of themselves, other city officials, employees, and the citizens of the city of Goldsboro of expressing to Pearson Pump Sales and Service their deep appreciation and gratitude for the services rendered by them to the city of Goldsboro over the years. Now therefore being resolved by the mayor and city council of the city of Goldsboro and all accounts of that, we express our thanks to Pearson Pump and Sales for volunteering their time, personnel, equipment to move the F-86 Sabre aircraft. This resolution shall be incorporated into the official minutes of the city of Goldsboro and shall be in full force and effect from and after this, the 16th day of November 2015. All for this resolution for adoption.
Second.
Is it?
Second.
Motion and a second?
Have second.
Any further discussions or comment? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known with an aye. Closing. Motion is carried. Is there representative?
Yeah, I would like to say this family's been doing stuff in this community, come on up here, for many, many years, starting with his dad, Lacy, back when I was a kid. So that's how long they've been here. And we appreciate all y'all have done for our community.
Sir?
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much. Congratulations. And you have done something that's very special to our community, but we get along well. Thank you. Do you have a comment?
Uh, no, but I would like to say my dad would have been proud because he was in the Air Force for 12 years, didn't stay long enough to retire, and wanted to go ahead and start a business. And he would have been proud to see that plane, or he'd still be proud of it. I don't know if he's even been up to see it yet, but he'd be proud to see it. As good as everybody can enjoy something like that.
Well, we appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you for all you did.
We have another presentation. I like good presentation, man. That's awesome stuff. And this one is very special. Certificate of Appreciation of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. Scott, would you like to say something about that?
Here the short version of this is this has been awarded to the city of Goldsboro by the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada for its comprehensive annual financial report, or our CAFR. The certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by government and its management. The CAFR has been judged by an impartial panel to meet the highest standards of the program, including demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure to clearly communicate its financial story and motivate potential users and user groups to read the CAFR. And it was for our 2014 fiscal year ending. And so we expect to receive this award, I think, most years. I mean, we expect it, but there's a lot of time and effort, and it's due in large part to Kay Scott, our finance director, and her staff, and of course, our auditors, working together to keep us in compliance. So I do want to recognize and thank Kay Scott and her staff. She's hiding in the back, Mayor.
Hey!
She'll come forward if you make her.
It's not easy to do either. I affectionately refer to this lady as money bag. And I can do that because let me tell you, we've been friends and worked together for more years than we like to talk about. Well, well over 30 years. And we'll leave it right here. So again, you know how much I appreciate you. That's why I'm leaving early. I made sure that Kay was here when I left. And I don't think it'll be too long before she leaves, but she deserves it. Whenever she gets ready to leave, boy, she's earned it. Again, thank you on behalf of all of our citizens and especially men.
We appreciate it.
Our department's staff.
Special group of young people. I think there are only a couple over here, you see them. But I'd like to welcome Ashford Boxing Club, Steve Ashford and Billy Strickland. These two young people, and I say young, and they are young, but compared to me, everybody's young. They came and we had a great discussion, and they're doing some fantastic things. And I invited them to come and share with you.
Thank you.
Some of the great things they're doing for young people. So you're on.
First of all, I want to thank you for this opportunity. And I'm just thankful to be here that we have worked hard enough to get this opportunity. My name is Steve Ashford, Jr. I went to Goldsboro High School, graduated from here. Drift off, got into boxing. I got a long story, but I know I can't say. Drift off, got into boxing, moved to New York, was boxing with a world champion. The whole time was in New York, I was thinking of a system to better off the kids because I was so blessed to get in it, but I couldn't help my friends that were around me because they were so old, they was older. So I was thinking of a system to help kids. I tore my shoulder out, so I came back to Goldsboro. And I just started taking kids off the streets. You know, I seen what was going on with the violence, with the gangs, with shooting. And I just started grabbing the kids real young on my own time, taking them and training them. One day, somebody came in and presented to me that they was having an opportunity where I could go speak to people. This was like almost seven years ago. And I went and spoke to a crowd of people, and I ran into Mr. Billy Strickland that came into my program and took me out to eat and told me, you know, that he was willing to help me if I involved education. And I told him that was perfect because I wanted a gym that had computers in it. And I was trying to groom kids and raise kids. I was getting kids from poverty, you know. I was getting kids that couldn't afford to come to the gym. So I got with Mr. Strickland, he sat back and watched me, you know, and made sure I was doing all the right things, you know. It's been a long road. And it's been a long road, but now we in a good place. We over at Parks and Rec. We doing a lot of wonderful things. I keep kids off the streets by having them in fundraisers, I take them to box. I'm in the school system. We go to the school, check on their grades. So my kids built this system. I started with two kids, and like I tell everybody, all have friends. And I tell them to bring their friends, and they all have cousins. And we just building something to stay, you know. We want such strong foundation.
Well, and I'll lead off from there. And my name is Billy Strickland. I think I know most of you guys. And I usually don't go in the public eye when it comes to stuff like this. I have been with Steve for seven years. We started out in an old body shop on Roll Avenue where it was 100 degrees inside and we had big old fans. And now we are at Herman Park, been there for about three, four years, and have a nice arena, boxing arena, everything, you know, a lot of supplies. But Steve is really, really dedicated to this. I've spent a lot of time and money with him. And we've went to the community, and people always say, oh, I wish there's something we can do. I wish there was something we can do that actually proves itself. Well, Steve's been doing it for six or seven years. We got about 50 kids there. I had originally been taking in one kid. I worked for five or six years in my office and get them out, you know, out of high school into college. And I've done that, and I can only help one at a time. And I'm on my third one. The other ones have graduated high school and college. And I've got, my, Kiondre's actually graduating high school now, we're sending him off to college. But with him, we can kind of merge the two and actually reach a lot more. We have a computer lab at the gym. My wife helps with all that. We have several computers. And matter of fact, just put some new bookshelves in, some books in. And the program's doing real well, and we've actually had some kids place in a lot of the competitions. And so, and I know I need to make this short, but just kind of let you know, if you read this pamphlet that Steve came up with, it tells you a lot about him, you know, the mission, his vision in the gym, tells you what kind of programs they are, and then who actually benefits from any contributions. And so it's always, what do you want? Why are you talking to us? Well, what we want, what Steve and I want, is for the community and people to get involved. Everyone's like, oh, I'd love to do this, and they always glad handing, and they don't show up, and they don't donate. We've put in, I've put in seven years with Steve. Steve has put in all the labor. See, it's easy for me because I go talk to the kids about the grades, and I fund their trips. And I mean, I've probably spent, I think I've donated $7,000 or $8,000 so far this year on stuff that we needed for the gym. But Steve's got the hard job. He's working almost for free most of the time, and I'm always trying to get him some money. But he needs some help financially, of course, so we can do more and reach more kids. But also just volunteers. We have, one of our board members is here today. And it's hard to even get a board together, but we have a board together, it's 501(c)(3), and we've been doing it for years now. And so if there's anything that the city can do, or just talent for people that can come out and help, that's what we're asking for. Or just keep this in mind and let you know that our people like Steve that are fighting for the community and fighting for these young kids, because I mean, we've got a lot of kids. And the school calls us. Either I go up there or Steve goes up there and deal with it, because a lot of times there are no parents that want to deal with it, or they don't care. And of course, my whole thing is, is like, you know, Steve brought in report cards today because that's my litmus test for everything. You know, if you want me to pay for your trips to South Carolina to Wilson, stuff like that for the fights, I want to see my grades. And so all the kids know every time the report card's come out, they got to send them to me because that's what helps the funding as far as what I'm concerned. So if you're looking for a good program or something to really help out, Mr. Ashford definitely has one. And we appreciate your time.
Well, my main thing was keeping kids off the streets. My main thing is I kept them off the streets. I keep them off the streets in the summertime to give them a facility to go to that they won't be around, the balance that's out there in the streets. I have kids that have called me and said, Mr. Steve, when are you going to open up a gym? Because I'm not trying to get shot, I'm not trying to be in the streets, I'm trying to prevent kids from being in the game. And I go right to the lower income areas, and I go and I get them and I bring them in. And we have, and we have built up a gym where the whole community is coming to box and work out. And we're looking to bring fights right here, amateur boxing right here to Goldsboro, and bring some fighters right out of Goldsboro. So we're looking to groom kids to be successful. I have two kids right now graduated from high school that had no plans of going anywhere, but now one is going to college and the other one's going to truck driving school. So we're just going to keep bringing them up like that, doing more and more. I just wanted y'all to know about.
Matter of fact, the one going to college is next week. We got to go, we're going to some applications and looking at some schools. I mean, because we take them up there, take them to college. So I mean, that's what we do. So, but thank you for your time. I appreciate your time.
I hope, I hope all of you understand now why these two young people were invited to come and share their story. This is a story that I think the Goldsboro needs to know about. And we've got people out there who have the resources to help you, not just money, but time and effort. And this, this program need our attention and our support because they are saving young men and women too, I would imagine.
No, sir. We do not focus that much on women, to be honest with you. But it's the, it's the young inner-city males. I know that people don't like that, or it might be sound sexist, it's not. There's specific reasons.
There was a boxing match over the weekend.
Oh, yeah, she's bad. Wouldn't want her kicking me in the face like she did that lady.
Well, you know, the one that got knocked on her butt was the one that was bragging all the time. She was undefeated. I know boxing because my son boxed at the Air Force Academy. He boxed at Madison Square Garden. A lot of people don't know that. But he is in, he was home for the weekend, and he went to watch that fight. So again, thank you so much for.
Billy and Steve, there is a movie that's coming out, I think that your kids would enjoy. It's called Creed.
Yes, sir.
You've probably seen the trailer for it. But it's Apollo Creed, the rocket thing.
It'd be a good movie.
I think that'd be a good movie.
And we haven't discussed it, but some of the stuff that we do is like hygiene things because a lot of these kids have no idea about hygiene. And my wife does a lot of super coupon shopping, so she gets all kinds of stuff. So we help with that. But like movies, some of these kids have never been to movies, never been out to a dinner somewhere. And so that's the kind of stuff that we like to do, and it's definitely something we consider.
You know, like, Mr. Strickland, boxing is just a platform to get them in. I like the sport of boxing, it did best for me because it's year-round. I play football, but after football season, you're a straw. But boxing is year-round, so I get all athletes after their basketball season, and we work with them, and we just, we discipline.
Any other questions?
Got any of the boys that can skip rope pretty good?
Oh, yeah. All my guys are very talented. We have guys like that.
Again, for those out there who are listening, please pay attention, and there must be something we can do to help you.
Well, we appreciate your time, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I guess we'll get to the heavy lifting now with the public hearings.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilman. Item F is CU 1315, John Hodge. The property is located on the southwest corner of South Center Street and Chestnut Street. The applicant proposes to operate a craft beer retail sales establishment in conjunction with a place of entertainment requiring ABC permits. The property is indicated in the red boundary lines. It has a frontage of 72 feet on South Center Street and 119 feet on West Chestnut Street. And the property is owned Central Business District. The hours of operation will be Monday through Friday, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m., and Sunday, 12:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m. Number of employees are two. The property was previously used for retail use and formerly known as a Faircall Appliance Sales and Service. Off-premise sales of craft beer would be a permitted use within the Central Business zoning district. However, the on-premise sales would require conditional use permit from City Council. The submitted site plan, as you can see on the screen, shows an existing two-story, 5,384 square foot brick building. The applicant intends to renovate approximately 1,600 square feet of the first floor for craft beer sales and consumption. Approximately 1,600 square feet of the remaining first floor area facing West Chestnut Street is currently being used for storage. The owner of the establishment is in the process of renovating the second floor for two apartments totaling another 1,600 square feet. Apartments are permitted above the first floor for office or office commercial land uses located in the Central Business District. The submitted floor plan for the proposed use shows seating for 25 people and includes a beverage shelving and display areas, tables, chairs, bathrooms, and a bar. Since the proposed use will be located in the Central Business District, off-street parking and landscaping requirements are not required. The city's UDO requires that any place of entertainment with ABC permits within the Central Business District maintain a distance of 50 feet from any church or school. There is no church or school within this location or within 50 feet of the location. The property is part of the Historic Preservation Overlay District and will be subject to any design standards for the downtown Goldsboro Historic District. No action is necessary. The planning commission will have a recommendation for council's meeting on December the 7th.
Thank you. Any question, council? Thank you, Jennifer. This is the public hearing as just described by Jennifer. Anyone would like to speak for or against? We'd be glad to hear from you. Anyone? Seeing no sign, we will close this public hearing and we will move to our next.
Item G, CU 1415, Parker Croom. The property is located on the south side of East Walnut Street between Center Street and John Street. The applicant requests a conditional use permit to allow the operation of a place of entertainment with ABC permits. The property is indicated in the hatched area on the screen. It has a frontage of 30 feet and is zoning Central Business District. The site is located in a small storefront under the Waynesboro House and has been operated as Bag Dogs Coffee Works. In addition to coffee, the applicant wishes to serve craft-style beer. The submitted site plan indicates seating, a coffee bar, storage, and restrooms. A combination of couches and sofas will be provided for seating along with four stools at the coffee bar. Hours of operation, 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Monday through Wednesday, and 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m. Thursday through Saturday. The city's UDO requires that any place of entertainment with ABC permits within the Central Business District maintain a distance of 50 feet from any church use. There is no church within the 50 feet of this location. Off-street parking and landscaping is not required. However, any exterior improvements if proposed will have to be submitted and reviewed by the Historic District Commission. No action is necessary. Planning Commission will have a recommendation for council at their December 7th meeting.
Thank you. Any question from Jennifer, council? Again, this is the public hearing as Jennifer just described. Anyone who would like to speak for or against, please come forward. We'd be glad to swear your end. It is a conditional use. Anyone? Melissa, I don't think there's anyone. So I will, we will close this public hearing, and while our hard work in planning, I really appreciate you. You help us out on the floor. You make our job much easier. But, and you can leave now, but if you'd like to stay and listen to the rest of this, you're welcome to do that, but your excuse otherwise. Look at that.
They don't want to listen.
I don't blame them. They're smart.
They don't want to listen.
Item H, contiguous annexation request. Deacon Jones' property, the three Js, almost 20.77 acres. Subject property is shown here in the black area. This is Highway 70, is shown here. This is the area photographed that shows the property located here. The city council at their meeting on October 19, 2015, scheduled a public hearing for proposed annexation of the subject property. Pursuant to GS 16A-31, at the public hearing, all persons owning property in the area proposed to be annexed, as well as residents of the municipality, shall be given an opportunity to be heard on the proposed annexation. If the council determines that the proposed annexation meets all the requirements of GS 16A-31, it has the authority to adopt an annexation ordinance. Attached to the report prepared by the Department of Planning and Commercial Development in conjunction with other departments concerning the subject annexation area, all city services can be provided to the property. The area being considered for annexation is located on the northeast corner of US Highway 70 East and North Oak Forest Road. The site is currently vacant. There would be no resident population associated with the property. The acreage of the property is 20.77 acres. The area is adjacent to and contiguous to the city boundaries. The proposed annexation area boundary abuts the existing city limits along this northern boundary. Property protection for the property requests for annexation will be provided by existing city personnel and equipment. Police protection to the subject property can be provided by existing city personnel and equipment. The city will be able to provide a commercial reference service to the site upon the request. Site construction and maintenance, no portion of the street has been included in the request for annexation. has been included in the request for annexation, therefore, no maintenance will be required. Water sewer service, city water service can be made available to the property. Sanitaris sewer lines are currently available to serve the property, and the city has held in its sanitary sewer assessment $23,346 in abeyance. That cost will become due upon annexation of the property. The estimated revenues, estimated tax revenue for this property will be $11,841.38, along with the sewer assessment of $23,346. The total first-year revenue for this site will be $35,187.38. The estimated payments to every volunteer fire department for the debt that they have acquired, the building and land debt, will be $3,885 for five years, and the apparatus and equipment will be $186 per year for four years, for a total of $744. Therefore, the estimated total unfortunate share for the volunteer fire department will be $4,629. With adoption and approval of revised electoral district maps in 2010, this area, if annexed, will be added to District 2 unless the City Council instructs the city staff to include this area in another district. The recommendation would be by motion. After the public hearing, adopt the attached ordinance annexed to three Js, Deacon Jones' property, effective November 30th, 2015.
Thank you. Any questions on Jimmy? Thank you. This is the public hearing as Jimmy just described. Anyone who would like to speak for or against, we'd be glad to hear from you. Anyone? Don't see any indications, so we have a recommendation.
Move for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments, questions before vote? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, ladies and gentlemen, say an aye.
Aye.
Item I is a contiguous annexation request. It's AAR property, 23.86 acres. It's basically similar to the one that I just read, so therefore, I'm going to go to the report. The area being considered for annexation is located on the south side of Gateway Drive between Commercial Court and Gateway Drive terminus. The site is currently developed as industrial operation. There would be no residential population associated with the property. The acreage is 23.8 acres. The area is adjacent and contiguous to the city boundaries. The proposed annexation area boundary abuts its existing limits along a portion of its northern boundary. Propagation for the property requests for annexation will be provided by existing city personnel and equipment. Police protection to the subject property can be provided by existing city personnel and equipment. The city will be able to provide commercial reference service to this site upon request. Street construction and maintenance, Gateway Drive along the frontage of the site has been included within the petition for annexation. This portion of Gateway Drive will be maintained by the city. Water and sewer service, city water and sewer service is currently being provided to the property. The estimated revenue for this site will be $52,229.32. The estimated payments to every volunteer fire department will be $20,444.5. With adoption and approval of the revised district maps in 2010, if annexed, this area will be added to District 2. The recommendation would be by motion. After the public hearing, adopt the attached ordinance annexed AAR property, effective November 30th, 2015. Any questions?
Any questions from Jimmy? If not, thanks, Jimmy. Another public hearing as Jimmy just described. Anyone want to speak, make comments? See no signs, so we'll close this public hearing, and we have a recommendation.
Move for adoption.
A motion and a second. Any further comment? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, ladies and gentlemen, say an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Closing. Motion's carried. That concludes our public hearing, and we move to our consent agenda.
Mayor and Council, your consent agenda consisted of items J through R. You removed item K and added item O-1, which was the employee bonus. So, your consent agenda is items J through R, removed item K, and the addition of O-1, the employee bonus.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further comments? We'll have a roll call vote, please.
Mayor King?
Yes.
Mayor Precum Allen?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Hemm?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Broadway?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Goodman?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Anha?
Yes.
Consent agenda's approved. Moving right along to items requiring individual action, and we do have an item.
Yes, sir. Now, that's Randy Guthrie to talk about the lease with the multi-sports complex with the Air Force.
Item S is the multi-sports complex lease. The city of Goldsboro proposes the development of the 62-acre site located off Oak Forest Road as a multi-sports complex for sports including soccer, football, and lacrosse. The completed project will include a combination of up to eight artificial natural grass fields and associated improvements. The city's been discussing the terms and conditions of the lease with the United States Air Force. As compensation for the lease, the city has agreed to build a 2,500-square-foot addition to the Seymour Johnson Air Force Base Fitness Center and provide use of the multi-sports facility for recreational use and sports programming for the Air Force base and community. The proposed lease will be for a term of 20 years with a possible 10-year extension provision. Additional compensation will be required for the additional 10-year lease period. If council is comfortable with the lease, staff would recommend that council authorize the mayor to enter to an agreement with the United States Air Force to lease and construct a multi-sports complex, subject to staff approval of the language and terminology of the lease. Happy to answer any questions.
Any comments or questions? Randy?
Not with ever.
Was there any more discussion? I'm just curious with regard to what the citizens had proposed, or Mr. Wright's proposal, anything? Any further discussion with that group?
We only had one meeting with that group. I think we still have some follow-up conversations, but with the Air Force, they were pretty clear in what they require from us and details and financing available. We do not have the financing available for another $3 million as the group had proposed, and really more like 10 to 15 million than we believe it would cost. There's not that money available, and the Air Force has made it been very clear in the lease negotiations. You have to give us a schedule of when you're going to build it, and you have to have the money or know where you'll have the money from. And the source has been our occupancy tax, and it is all committed for the multi-sports complex. There is no more, so we can't meet those requirements with the Air Force of including it, the lease, at this time.
Any more comments? If not, we have a motion before us.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the lease of the multi-sports complex with the understanding that our negotiator continues to negotiate things a little better into our favor, hopefully as years, as the usage, just anything you can do to make it more favorable to the city is good. I mean, I think we are where we are, and we can't do a lot, but anything we can do, I would like to keep trying to do. That's my motion.
Second. And a second. Any further discussion? No question.
Mr. Mayor, wouldn't it be more so appropriate to work out the agreement between the Air Force before we move to approve this?
I think they've been efforts with the Air Force for two years, three years, two years?
The lease negotiation's been going hard since May, so we have been back and forth. We've met in person. The lease that we provided to you will be very similar to that lease of Councilmember Goodman in terms of its term and what's required in the lease. We've gotten better on the day's worth of usage. We've gotten the terms, at least where they have told us they can get to with what we're offering in terms of compensation. I think there'll be some minor wordsmithing, but the general terms of the lease are what we presented to you in the draft at the meeting, I guess in November, and then what we've included, or, excuse me, back in October, and then we've included tonight as well. So, it's not the final lease, but it is very close to what we believe the final product will be.
Mr. Mayor, I have one concern. I know I'd heard it mentioned some time ago in one of our meetings that this, these indoor activities that have been requested by the community and schools, indoor games, didn't I hear some discussion that possibly it might could be Herman Park at some point in time, some of that stuff?
Councilmember Williams, we have talked about it, the two things going on. One, the agreement that you're approved with the school system will allow access to gymnasium space that we've not had before. So, short-term, we'll have some access to those additional gym space as we drive the need for other activities. So, where we've had one gym that we can use or count on before, we'll now have more like four with the agreement you've approved with the school system. Beyond that, what we've talked about long-range making sense is to have a gymnasium in Herman Park Center, but again, it was not approved as part of the bond vote, and that was the project that would suffer, or at least as we were going through the bond over a year ago. We talked about that project, not having a way to fund that in the short-term. So, I still think that is the right location, whether it's two gymnasiums built there, which is what we had proposed, or something more. I think that is still a good site and makes sense for the community for additional indoor space at some point in the future.
Any more discussion before we vote? All in favor of the motion, ladies and gentlemen, say an aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. City manager to report.
Mayor and Council brief on two items. I do want to say thank you to the outgoing members. As a council, you have been a very good group to work with, and I've enjoyed you as a group, so thank you a lot for that. Please don't hesitate to call me if I can be assistance. The numbers will be the same. We'll still answer and take your calls and look forward to chatting with you as time goes forward. The other thing I would mention is the Kaboom project this weekend was, I think, a very successful project in terms of the community. I do want to say thank you to all those that were involved in that. We had over 276 volunteers out Saturday morning, and basically constructed a playground in one day, so to speak, and again, a lot of thank yous to go out on that, and maybe more to come, but I just want to mention that. And then finally, our website, we continue to, we put it out there as a redesigned website. It was designed in-house with a lot of input from many people in the departments, and we'd ask those in the community to take a look at it. If they have comments or areas that we can help make it any better, we would appreciate that feedback as well, and that's all I have, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney?
I have no report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Mayor and Council's recommendations and comments. Gene?
Nothing except, you know, we're losing three of our colleagues, and we've made friendships here, and my number's still in the book. And I won't call, Bluckey, I promise you. Give me a call anytime. I can help you with anything, or if you've got some advice for me, you know.
You bet.
I value it.
Charles?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Mayor-elect, to the city manager, city attorney, city clerk, to all the administrative staff, all city employees. It has been an exciting, challenging, and rewarding experience for me over the past 20 years on this council, and I owe a debt of gratitude to the voters of District 4 for having placed their trust and confidence in me for two decades. I have no regrets because I have not betrayed their trust. With God's help, I've been able to maintain sensitivity for the have-nots, the middle class, and the rich. My departure will not be one in exile or repose. As a matter of fact, my wife and I will journey about 30 miles down south to our second home, where we will continue to engage in church work as bishop and first lady overseeing local churches spread over six counties. The Western Assembly of the disciples of Christ Church Organization, 143 years old this month, has reelected me to serve four more years in addition to the 38 years I've been in that position. I extend, I extend an invitation to all of you to come visit us, with us, at our headquarters located three miles north of Newton Grove, North Carolina, on Highway 701. We can accommodate church camps in our facility with two dormitories, one for females, one for males. Youth groups can stay there on the campus with meals and room and board, and they can stay up to two weeks. And please go online and observe our facilities at westernassemblydiscipleschristchurches.com, Newton Grove, North Carolina. Be glad to have you all to come over, and our facility is open to all faiths. If you order any, it's at your disposal, and it's been so delightful up here. I enjoy every moment, second, day, month, and years, every bit of it, and I'll always remember the friendships I've made and the people I've worked with, and I wish you well, Mayor-elect.
Thank you, sir.
And all of the council members that's been elected, and you know, I pray for you, and I wish you well. May God bless all of you, and may God bless our city of Goldsboro. And I'm so grateful to the city of Goldsboro for having received me as one of their council members, and I just love you all, and I'll be praying for you. God bless you.
That's good. William?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. First, congratulations to the Mayor-elect and my other fellow council members whom have been reelected. It's been great serving on this council. When I started on this council, none of these fellows were here. Matter of fact, all the council members whom served with me on that council are deceased, and I have had a great run. I've enjoyed doing what I've been doing. At some point in time, all things must come to an end, and I don't have any regrets. I have nothing but the best wishes for this new board and this new group of young men whom have come for to serve on this board, and if I can be of any help to you, please feel free to call upon me. To the city employees whom have faithfully served, I wish them the best because I think we've got some of the best city employees any city could actually ask for. And I will be around. As long as I'm around, I know somebody's going to be calling me, asking me things, so I'm going to pass them on to you now. But I hope you enjoy it as much as I've enjoyed it, okay? And keep your head up. You can have good days, and you can have a lot of bad days, and you're going to ask yourself, what have I gotten myself into, too? But everything will work out. We've got a good city manager here, good staff, so things are going to work out. And to the citizens whom have stood beside, behind me and supported me over the years, thank you so much. I could not have done it without you. And I've made a lot of friends, a lot of friends, not just in Goldsboro and not just in Wayne County, but all over the country. And the wife and I will probably plan on doing some traveling now, okay? That's all I have to say, and thank you.
Bill? I'd like to also thank all the outgoing council members, and thank you for your counsel and being gathering friendships and learning. This is my first term, and I've learned a lot from you, and I appreciate it, and I do. I'd also like to thank the men of the Fourth Equipment Maintenance Squadron. These troops didn't have to work on that airplane. They did that, and they worked on their own time, and sometimes we forget that they could have been home, they could have been playing ball or something else, but they were out there working on that airplane, and it just shows just how important Seymour Johnson is to them and to us, and I'd just like to congratulate them. That's a lot of time. And the last thing I have is I'd like to congratulate David Will and Wayne Memorial Hospital and Blue Cross Blue Shield for the money they put into the Kaboom Playground. And I can tell you, between Wayne Memorial and Blue Cross Blue Shield, we had, it always hadn't been a nice relationship, but they punted up some money, and they also punted up about 70, 50 to 75 people, and they spent the night, and that says a lot, and it says a lot for Goldsboro. And 252 people out there, I don't know how they got anything done, but somehow or another, at 2:30, it was done. So, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Michael?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I've said what I need to say to you. I said it in my last session. I said it in closed session. I'd like to just simply offer my congratulations to Mr. Ham, Mr. Stevens, Mr. Foster, I think that's you, I see you back there, and I'm going to stand and do something I've been waiting to do for a while. Antonio, our new guy for District 1, he'll take care of it. But it's, it has been my pleasure, and Antonio and I had a very nice chat out in the rain at the election. We talked about a lot of things, and I told him, keep your head up, watch your back. I said, I'm the old guy, you know where to find me if you need me, but, you know, the old, old guys like me, we just kind of move on to other things, and I'm gonna be looking to get into private practice, go back to what I was trained to do, be a psychologist and work with individuals with addictions, work with families, marry individuals, young men and women who have problems, and I'm looking to set up shop here in, in our downtown. So, yeah, and I'm looking at, that's a new adventure, a door that's opening for me, but I would say thank you to the citizens of District One, and I would ask every citizen in District One, get behind Antonio, he needs your support. Support him. Lift him up when he needs that. Be there, be his anchor for him, just as you were for me. God bless you all. Thank you, thank you from the bottom of my heart. I'll look in on you from time to time. You know how to reach me if I'm out here, but I turn it over to you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Chuck?
You ready?
I'm ready.
All right, man, I got a list. I'm usually, um, well, first off, I want the public to know that tonight, one of the things we approved is the extension of our next phase of our bike trail. Basically, that had been put on hold because we were three hundred thousand dollars short, and this is the bike trail to complete the one we started on New Hope Road going all the way to Wayne Memorial. We were either gonna have to cancel it, or we're gonna have to come up with three hundred thousand dollars. Jennifer, our, um, transportation person, and Bobby and our transportation, they've met on, off and on with DOT, and DOT, at their urging, has found three hundred thousand dollars to help us complete this project. It's a big deal, because it's a million dollar project, it connects another greenway, it's all about quality of life, that's what we're up here fighting for, so I want Jennifer and Bobby and everybody involved to know that we appreciate that extra effort, because that's, that's how we get things done, is with folks working that extra effort. They could have just said, we can't do it, and it would have been that easy, it would have been everywhere. So they kept fighting, so I want to thank them for that. Um, this past Saturday, I was fortunate to be invited to First Baptist Church, a church here in our own downtown, and I actually rode by there about six-thirty in the morning. There was probably two hundred people lined up outside then, and they stayed, they had, they served over four hundred people, they fed them breakfast, and then they let them go in their gym, and in their gym, they had all kinds of clothing, coats, blankets, just all the things that people would need for winter, and everybody in line, and matter of fact, a couple people said they had got in line at four o'clock in the morning. If you get in line at four o'clock in the morning to get something, then you need it. I mean, that's the way I would look at it, and so I really want to thank First Baptist for, for their efforts. I think they had a really good turnout, and some folks got some really good stuff. I appreciate that a lot. Um, I do want to thank the people who went out and voted. There weren't very many of you, but for those ten percent of our population that did vote, we all thank you, and we'll work hard next year on trying to up, or the next time we vote, to try to up that average, um, because it is kind of sad that only ten percent of the folks voted, but everybody that did vote, we really thank you, and we certainly, and will look to your comments for the next four years. Um, the, uh, the other thing I want to remind everybody of is the parade, the Christmas parade is December fifth, this Saturday, this coming, December fifth, Saturday downtown, so we want a big turnout. While I'm on parades, I do want to thank the folks on the Veterans Day Parade. We, we broke our downtown Center Street revocation, revitalization in with the Veterans Day Parade, and there were people everywhere, and I could see Scott, he's up there nervous wreck, because he sees them walking on his monuments and his plants, and he's like, no, no, but it all survived, and it was all good, and, and we, it was great seeing that many people. The folks that put it on did a really good job. The parade was good, and, and we look for the Christmas parade to be just as good, so we're excited about that. Along the calendar list, on November twenty-fourth, we have our lights up downtown, and that's when the mayor's gonna turn the lights and cut the lights on for our Christmas lights downtown, so we always have a good turnout. We have the Grinch, Santa Claus, and a lot of other things, and we, we really look forward to that, so we want to remind everybody, encourage everybody to come to do that. Kaboom. Saturday, I was fortunate enough to get to go out to the park and cut the ribbon for Kaboom, and I do want to mention the folks that, that were involved, at least from the money standpoint, which was the Kaboom folks themselves, Blue Cross Blue Shield, the city of Goldsboro put in money, we put in fifty thousand dollars, Wayne First put in money, the hospital put in money, and United Way put in money. And, and as Bill said, it was really good, because there was two hundred and fifty-plus people out there, and they, um, a lot of them were Blue Cross Blue Shield, a lot of them were hospital, folks from Mount Olive came over. I saw Bill Brian, the head of Mount Olive Pickle. Our own David Will was there from six-thirty in the morning until three o'clock that afternoon, the whole day, and, uh, he had his shovel going. I mean, it's, it was just really awesome, because one thing as a new mayor, I really want to work on is, is our city being more inclusive, how we make our city more inclusive. And if you look at that, there is no better project than a project that has that many volunteers, reaches across that many people, and is for our children, which is the basis of our community. So I'm really excited, and that was a good way to, to, that was the first ribbon, I guess I kind of got to cut, and I was really excited about that ribbon, so that's really good. And lastly, I do want to, um, I, I'm not gonna say that, I'm gonna say goodbye to our departing council members, because I'm sure it's not a goodbye, because I'm sure they all have opinions, and I'm sure that we'll share the opinions back and forth, and as the mayor's told me, he's, he's not that far away, and he can come back and correct anything we mess up, so we don't want that. But I do look forward to, to taking over as mayor soon, and I do want to recognize our new council members, because they're all out there. I see David Hamm, who's taken over, uh, Mark Anderson, Bevan Foster, and Antonio, so we do look forward to working with y'all in the future, and, and we're excited about that. And with that, Mayor, I'll be quiet.
Oh, well, well said, everyone. I won't make any comments about my departure, I'll just make the comment about, uh, my wife, who's in the hospital, been in the hospital, been in and out for the last couple of weeks, and I want to thank everyone who sent flowers and stopped by to see her and cards. She's still there, and hopefully she'll be leaving soon, but to all of you, your prayers and thoughts, uh, we really appreciate it. When I leave here, I'm going to go by there, and I said my son's in town, he's over there with her stuff, so if there's nothing further to come before us, we stand adjourned. Okay. Michael? I do. Jeff?
Mayor.